I'd like to call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. This is a special work session. Our work sessions have a little different rules than our regular public meeting. In our work session, they're generally meant to be information gathering exercises. So there is no public comment. I know we have a lot of public here that is interested. And this may seem a little one-sided, but believe me, we've heard from a lot of people in the -- out in the public regarding this issue. We've had two different legal opinions. And we -- the only thing that was missing is really hearing directly from our Board of Health and hearing their concerns, their reasoning. So I did want to ask that, you know, for an understanding that, you know, we're here to hear from the Board of Health and the Commission to ask questions as needed. On the phone, we have -- yeah, Mr. Ellis, are you there?
I am, Commissioner. Thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you. I want to tell you that when people had asked who we hired, and for like two days, I was telling people we hired Paul O'Neal. So -- which a lot of people -- I didn't hear anybody laughing. Paul O'Neal is a professional baseball player.
Well, you can call me anything you'd like, Commissioner.
But --
Don't worry, we will.
Paul's on the line to listen. We just retained Paul about two weeks ago, and he was looking into a couple new aspects of this -- of this whole -- the regulations. So he's here to listen, and we'll go from there. Again, I ask all parties to be reminded that this is a civil conversation between Commission and Board of Health. I don't want this to be adversarial. I tell people all the time that I use this old Brigham Young quote, that "He who takes offense when no offense is intended is a fool, and he who takes offense when offense is intended is a bigger fool." So I just -- we're here to understand both sides of this issue, and for the most part, we're taking information. We may or may not have questions, but we're just trying to gather the information. So from your perspective, we want you to be able to relay those concerns. So having said that, I'd like Dr. Smith to come up. And the first thing I want -- you come up to the microphone.
This one or that one?
That one right there.
All right.
And I'd like to -- I'm going to give you a lot of latitude to provide a general synopsis of the reasons that the Board of Health feels that these rules are required. In general, I mean in regards to existing state statute, in regards to state OMC, in regards to the history of states that have gone before West Virginia, in regards to public health and medical concerns in general. Just your synopsis, and then I'll ask each of the board members to do the same thing.
I appreciate that second comment more than you know, because I'm sure I'm going to leave some things out there. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Commission this afternoon. I know that this is -- turned out to be a contentious issue, and we did not intend that going in. I think historically, the state had passed the medical cannabis and established the Office of Medical Cannabis, and then came COVID. And it gave some artificial timelines, and in the midst of trying to fight on one front, we had to divert some effort and resources towards putting together the responses. So the original legislation that got changed had a larger role for public health. It was involved with the inspections and approvals at a local level, and that sort of morphed over a couple of years through legislative change. And the -- well, there's been one more change that dealt with a few things since we put our stuff out that really hadn't changed what we were requested to do. So it came to us, as it did to the county commission, to put forth a thumbs up or thumbs down with their awareness that there were any rules that would prevent the establishment of a business to sell medical cannabis. And I don't believe that -- another was one county that was thinking no, but I think the majority of the 55 counties said that there was no issue. And then that was at the county commission level, and at the same time, there was a request from the Board of Health to put forward a yea or nay on the approval of the applications in regard to whether they met statutory regulations. And at that time, there was like a thousand-foot between, couldn't be close to a school, et cetera, et cetera. We were given a list of 22 applicants, as you may recall, and we worked with your GIS mapping guys, and we found that there were a couple of applications that were flawed, and they were never approved. In that batch that was given us, I recall, there was also one that was going to be a grower, but everybody else was going to be a dispensary. And so we approved that there was no -- that they met the intent of the legislative requirements, and that was, if I recall, I think that that was an October deadline. And then the Office of Medical Cannabis, which at that time was, I believe, just one or two people, they ended up having to process. And so they eventually came out with the list of people who were approved for growers, the list of people that were approved for -- I'm blocking on the right word. Processors, thank you. And then the 100 applicants that met their criteria for dispensaries across the state. We were a little surprised that there were 14 approved for our county, because if you look at surrounding states, that number's a little more than what occurs in Ohio and states with larger populations. I'm not involved in the business end of that, and I'm not going to be worried about how many sales I have to make to make the ends meet, but it seems like right out of the gate that there's going to be a lot of competition for the same audience. Be that as it may, myself as a physician and no one that I'm aware of at the board or within the body of the staff at the Health Department is in opposition of medical marijuana. Our concern is that it needs to be regulated in a manner that doesn't cause issues within our community. There are ample studies and evidence that document that where medical marijuana becomes sold, there's an increase in hospitalization, particularly if it's edible. Colorado being the very first state to produce legalized medical marijuana in edible form, and their PICU admissions went through the roof. And our state has not put any sort of parameters around that, that we should tax X amount of this for taking care of kids. If you come home and Johnny's walking on the ceiling because he got into the gummies, you have to put him somewhere, and usually it's going to be in a monitored bed, which usually translates for a pediatric intensive care bed. So that's just a small example of how there are some things that follow the rules of unintended consequences. And we wanted to come up with a regulation, a rule if you will, that addressed some of these issues. It has been stated that the Boards of Health do not have the authority to promulgate rules, but that is -- that flies directly in the face of the West Virginia Code. Chapter 16, in Article 2, there is, I think it's 11, states that Boards of Health from time to time will promulgate rules and regulations that will improve the public health. I'm paraphrasing. So the authority to do that has, in our mind, has never been an issue. We did not do this blindly. We too tried to do our due diligence and had experts and subject matter people come in and report before the Board. And then the Board of their own. I sit on the Board, but I am an ex officio member without voting privileges, so I'm certainly aware of the issues before the Board. This -- go ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but -- The way I was envisioning this conversation is --
I'm sorry. I'd already gone off in the waiting room.
First of all, talking about your overall reasonings for why you have to, you know, why you have concerns about medical cannabis. And then the second part of that is the statutes that you adopted and the legal reasoning for why you have the authority to do that. So for now, first, if we can get you and the Board to focus on just those reasonings for why you need to do something, you know, or overall concerns. So that'd be inadequacies with the existing statute, inadequacies with the OMC, history of what other states that have adopted this before West Virginia and what they're seeing, and again, just regular public health medical concerns.
Thanks.
Okay? If that makes sense to try to just --
No, it does.
Try to look at two different --
Appreciate the focus.
Okay.
It's late in the day. So I think that your topics are a good summary of where our thoughts were, is that the Office of Cannabis in Charleston, I'm sure that Jason Frame is well-intentioned, but the oversight and the rules and regulations that came out of there are not on par with other states. And one of our Board members went to Pennsylvania and looked at growing and processing and delivery from several organizations, one of which was a national chain, and they did not have very high opinion of the way that West Virginia had approached this. It wasn't to better their own position, but just as a matter of conversation, here's some items that you guys might want to think about. I mentioned the issue with crime that follows medical cannabis or the sale of items like this, that it's a cash business because of the issues with the federal government and wiring of money. The product is certainly viable, so you know, you have two entities there that are attractive to people that don't want to obey laws. When we look at the overall health rankings, excuse me, of the various counties, the county rankings come out once a year. It's a Robert Wood Johnson-funded research that's been going on for a number of years. And they look at the things that create a healthy life, and so it's quality of life and quantity of life. And it's based upon decisions that are made, and crime is one of the larger underpinnings. So if we're going to measure public health, crime has to be in the formula of how we measure that. And so we went back and developed a preamble to try to document why these issues we feel are in the purview of public health to try to measure. If Montague County, which this year got voted number one throughout the state, best county for length of life, best county for quality of life, now you know that this floats from year to year, and we're in competition with Putnam County and Martinsburg over there in that part of the wood. We know that of the things that go into there, the policies and decisions that are made at local level really impact it, so it's an underpinning. And while it may not be visible and readily apparent to people that if regulations are going to impact a business, how is it that this belongs under the purview of public health or another entity? And so we feel that the West Virginia Code establishes that we have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations. We feel that this is an area that impacts the quality and quantity of life in our community and our county. Our job is to try to support public health, promote the public good, prevent disease, protect the public, and we're sworn to uphold all of those laws. And so I think that's sort of a basic position that we came from that led us down this analysis of this existing law. What we saw out of Charleston was evolving and, you know, but did not give us a level of comfort that we think is the minimum that we wanted to see to protect our citizens.
Okay.
I'd like to stop there and get somebody else to tag out here.
And again, if you can, if you feel like you forgot something, you jump in. Any one of you can get back up. Again, and what I want to focus on is really the, from your aspect, the medical, public health, public health reasons of things we need to be concerned with, and then we can have a brief discussion of the legal discussion. Because I think we -- I think you guys have opinions, we had opinions, I think we've kind of, we've talked about that a lot. So, but I really wanted to hear, you know, the public health, medical concerns of each member of the -- we wanted to hear those opinions, so.
I'd tag out to Dr. Dick Yaki up here.
Hi, gentlemen. Thank you for having us, and I didn't -- you know, I've talked to Commissioner Sikora about this. I do not have a prepared statement, but I will tell you the concerns and the reason that you --
Tony, just for the record, would you state your full name?
Tony Dick Yaki.
And your occupation, and you're obviously a member of the Board of Health, but what's the expertise that you bring to the Board of Health?
I'm a family nurse practitioner and Associate Dean for Practice, Community, and Policy at the WV School of Nursing.
Thank you very much. And you don't need to have a prepared statement. This is really just a conversation, so you can just speak from, just like picking up the phone and talking to me about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the considerations that the Board of Health made and that the reasons why you appoint Board of Health members are to consider the public safety and public health of our community. And across the country, when medical or recreational cannabis has been passed at the state level, there have been a crossroads of considering in policy mitigation or economic development. And I realize, and we certainly through the last year have seen, that public health and economic progress sometimes don't coincide perfectly. But our lens is looking at what impacts the health and safety of Mon County. And looking at cannabis, that what appears to have happened across the country is that medical entree has been the route because it's more palatable. But if you look at the evidence of the effectiveness of cannabis across -- in our state, it's 14 conditions that the code allows for medical cannabis to be dispensed. The moderate and high-level evidence of cannabis being effective, what I have found are pretty much three conditions: cachexia and HIV, irretractable nausea and vomiting, and chemotherapy for cancer patients, and severe spasticity from neuromuscular disorders. And certainly, I think everybody on the -- in the county, certainly you, certainly us on the Health Department, are very supportive of compassionate use, end-of-life use. I mean, I think we should go beyond cannabis for compassionate use in this state. But when we look at our health rankings, we don't have enough of the conditions that are approved in the code to support 14 dispensaries in the state. If you look on average at the other municipalities that have allowed medical cannabis, it's on the average of about one dispensary for 19,000 conditioned patients. In Mon County, it will be about 1 to 7,500 patients. And of 105, a little over 105 people in our population, it's unlikely that more than 2% will have any of these conditions. So that's the first concern. Is there a disproportionate amount of dispensaries for the conditions that we're going to see? And the reason that that's important is because there is certainly correlation between the amount of dispensaries in a locale and the perception of adolescents on the safety of marijuana. And that certainly is a vulnerable population. I'm particularly concerned about adolescents and pregnant women. And so the more consolidation of dispensaries in this county, the more concerned that people will think it's safe to use. And we certainly, I mean, I know employers have been concerned about getting page -- or employees to pass drug tests. The number-one failure of drug tests in employment is marijuana. And with a condition like pain or PTSD or neuropathy, to be able to get the card, I'm really concerned about our employee base as well. So that's the first concern. The other concern is public safety, and there are certainly elements and the ordinance that we passed regarding that. You know, I'm not an expert in this. I will defer to other people, but the ordinance, to me, seemed common sense, and certainly the research does support that there are increases in armed robbery, burglary, theft, in areas that have high consolidation of dispensaries. So in short, I'm totally supportive of compassionate use, totally supportive of the concept of allowing people with certain conditions to have access, but I do feel like it's our responsibility as the Health Department to inform you as the Commission and the state in general about the health and safety consequences of dispensaries and marijuana in general for the public health.
Thank you very much, Tony. Tag out to Dr. Zullig.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me.
Keith, just like I did with Donna, would you say your name and then kind of the expertise that you bring to the Board of Health?
Sure. My name is Keith Zullig. I'm a public health scientist, West Virginia University School of Public Health. Been a practicing public health professional for over 20 years. I'm a researcher. I've published well over 100 peer-reviewed articles. And I'm also a father and a husband. I have an eight-year-old son. We've lived here for 13 years. And my concern, as others have stated, as a member of this Board of Health, is the safety of our community. According to the National Association for County and City Health Officials, local health departments have the ability to track and investigate health problems and hazards in the community and develop and apply enforced policies, laws, and regulations that improve health and ensure safety of the constituents that we serve. I am not a politician. I am not a businessman. I am not a lawyer. I am not a medical doctor. I'm a scholar, and what scholars do is they go to many sources, not one. And when I look at the peer-reviewed research, it's compelling enough to make me alarmed at the number of dispensaries that we were asked to approve. And I believe that there's a concern enough in the literature, recent literature from Colorado, looking at crime and violent statistics, that we should take cautionary measures to mitigate that risk as best as possible. I wrote the preamble to the proposed regulation in support of my colleagues, and I am in support of local control in some degree for our county because of these risks. I believe that if we're going to treat this as a medical, as a medical situation in terms of medical dispensaries, we ought to treat it, and the literature would tell us that we should treat it equally as other medicines in terms of efficacy and so on. And so that is my concern as a Board member, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have in terms of my thinking on this. We were asked to weigh on it, weigh in on it by the state to consent on it, and I believe that's what we did. I believe our process was very purposeful and not capricious or arbitrary, and I am in support of the proposed regulation or an amended version of that.
Thank you, Dr. Zullig. Dr. Lilly, that'd be fine. Again, your name and the expertise that you bring to the Board of Health.
George Lilly. Second part of your question, please.
Your expertise that you bring to the Board of Health.
Okay. I am retired, having worked in the behavioral health field in West Virginia for 34 years. Came to Mon County in 1994. Having worked in the healthcare field, obviously, I hope you could understand my interest is in the health and welfare of citizens of our state and proud to be part of that. Conversation that you've heard is the conversation I've heard. I'm not an expert, not a lawyer, not a doctor. My role previously was an administrator. So my approach and where I've come from in looking at this issue is that the legislature had the responsibility and took it and provided for a law to enable this activity. And in their wisdom, then they created the Office of Medical Cannabis to administer the program in the state of West Virginia. They also created rules, and those rules were passed to further elaborate on how medical cannabis is to be conducted in the state. That's where the legislature has ended, and that's where the medical cannabis regulation, if you will, stands. And then it comes to the county. So my interest is in looking at how we can improve and ensure the safety and welfare of our citizens by looking at anything that could strengthen that activity in our county under the understanding that it would not alter, if you will, too terribly, the rules of the legislature. So with the information that you've been providing in terms of the expertise of those that you've heard so far, that's where I come in on it. And I'm understanding, too, that this is an evolving process, that as time passes, new science will come out, new information will be provided, making the need for alteration to rules and practices and how things are conducted. So this is today. There is a future. I'm looking forward to the hearing as to the amended regulation that we put out, where that might take us to. So again, I see this as an evolving process, not a one-and-done.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lilly.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Donna Tennant, and I have a degree in business -- or healthcare administration. And I have been working in the direct practice for 28 years at Sundale. You know, I totally understand how important medical marijuana could be to our community, working with people who are dying every day and watching the need for pain management. However, my biggest concern is I worry about, you know, there being so many of these distributors that it's going to be the same thing as the hotspot on the local corner. that it's going to be the same thing as the hotspot on the local corner, that they're everywhere. And, you know, I don't think that's something that we want in our community. You know, so my thought is that, you know, about the limitations of the area. I also, you know, as we've researched, is a lot of crime in many other areas because of this being a cash-based business, there seems to be more crime in a lot of areas that there are more of the dispensaries. You know, having grandchildren, of course, that's always a concern because we have so much of an opioid addiction here in our community that, again, you know, marijuana, you have to look at that or cannabis as, you know, what's it going to do? How accessible is it going to be to the children? That's a big concern. You know, I think we just are trying to monitor and put a hand on it before it gets out of control. And I think that's the biggest thing. You know, I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but, you know, we've worked on this together to try to make sure that we come up with the best possible scenario we could. And thank you.
Thank you for your service. President Chico.
I'm Sam Chico, Chairman of the Mon County Board of Health. I am not a medical doctor or pharmacist, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express. I'd like to just really thank the commission for all the support the Health Department gets and like to thank the Lord that we have Dr. Lee Smith as our county health officer. Brilliant man. His experience in emergency medicine is second to none. It has helped us save countless lives in COVID. But his wisdom with drugs and seeing what the ravages of the ER firsthand for most of his life, he was instrumental in affecting the regulation. Toni is a second blessing. She is just a brilliant mind. She's not only medically brilliant, she's a CPA and has tremendous business experience. And our concerns regarding the economics and the stress, this is not a business that we want laissez-faire. Let the strong survive and let the weak perish. There's too much temptation to bend the rules and sell to people that are not on the approved list, that it would be dangerous to get into the youth's hands. The Surgeon General, both the previous Surgeon General and the current Surgeon General, although they are for medical marijuana, they have both extreme concerns with chronic cannabis use in the youth and pregnant women. Dr. Zulig is third blessing. I don't know how this commission has blessed us with such a talented board, but his ability to find the answer to questions that nobody knows the answer to and back it up with data, his ability to unemotionally and objectively look at problems and separate the wheat from the chaff and see through the clouds, it's been invaluable in a lot of things. But his thoughts and his input on cannabis has been irreplaceable. I'm going to start crying, but Toni and I have been through a lot of wars together. And, you know, her experience with end-of-life care and the importance of pain, but also her long-term community member and her concerns. There are pluses and minuses with everything, and this cannabis has a lot of minuses. She's seen the pluses. She's seen people pain. She's seen end-of-life care for the last 28 years, every day of her life. She understands the benefits and she understands the risks. And George, with his 34 years, he's our newest member. He has been, you know, our watchdog on many different things. He is a proponent. He is also always thinking of the counterthought and challenging us every step of the way. And I can just tell you, we have a diverse board. We have a very scholarly, educated board, and we have a very experienced board. I would also like to point out that we're probably the only people in this room that have no economic interest in this. We don't make a penny, and we don't lose a penny, whether this comes or goes, whether the ordinance is here. We are unaffected by economics in our decision and our making. We are here for the betterment of the community. And although we all benefit with a good tax base and good jobs, we don't benefit by, you know, not being aware of the violent element that comes with this business. Whenever you store a million dollars in cash in a facility, you should have adequate controls. If you've never, you know, I grew up in the convenience store business. I've seen people shot and killed over less than $100 many times, and unfortunately, in my own properties. And it changes you. And you're blessed if you've never had to do that. You're blessed if you've never had to deal with the woman who got a gun put to her head at night shift and she's clinically depressed for the rest of her life. She's on medication and in therapy. If we bring these businesses here, we are bringing a whole new criminal element here. And I can assure you, after some period of time, you're going to put in these rules. Now, we could do it, you know, we can wait until people get harmed, and then we'll retrofit these places. Or we can be proactive and put them in. Talk to any of the dispensary operators that have been in business for some period of time, especially the multi-store, multi-state operators. They are for these regulations. They understand the importance of them. Whether we pass them or not, they're going to have the safes. They're going to have the security systems. They're going to have the controlled access. They're going to have the guards. Because they've had enough bad instances to know you don't walk around with a million dollars' worth of inventory and a million dollars' worth of cash unless you protect it. So I ask that you, if you do not have the expertise, if you do not have the education, if you don't have the experiences in these things, defer to the experts. Defer the medical questions to the medical community. Seek out the prosecuting attorneys and the sheriffs and the police officers and the detectives that have had to try to track down these things. And I'm not talking about, I'm talking organized crime. I'm talking Ocean's Eleven-type crimes. I'm talking about gang violence. I'm talking about semiotic weapons and overwhelming force coming into these places and scaring people to death or killing them. This is not a spontaneous stick-up-type crime we are looking at. This is something that we have not seen before. And if you talk to any of the other communities, talk to the sheriffs, it's going to come. And we'd be naive to think that somehow it's just not going to happen to us. We're going to open up these businesses, not have adequate security, leave a highly valuable medical-grade cannabis, which is a light item that's easy to scoop up a bunch of and run away with, and cash, and not think that there's a criminal element coming. And violent crime is a public health concern. So that is why we have presented this to you. We have no dog, like I say, we have no economic dog in this hunt. We just love Morgantown. I was born and raised here. Known Tom my whole life, known Sean half my life. Love to get to know you. Mark Nestle Road has my number and is speed dial. Probably not quite a year ago, you called me in July. I was on vacation. I was out of the country. His call was his time. My call was in the middle of the night. But when Mark Nestle Road calls, you take the call. And he told me, you know, hey, we need these approvals to come through. You know, we need this, we need that. And he explained to me his economics and his concern. I told him I'd work with him. Now, we had 21 applicants to approve. I had no clue. It was beyond my comprehension that they were going to approve 20, 14. They actually approved more than 14. We rejected a couple of them. I was not prepared for that. That changed the whole game. And as all of us that have lived in Morgantown our whole lives, and as you, as county commissioners, you know that Charleston oftentimes, from our perspective, perhaps doesn't always have our best interests at heart. And I think that local inspection is critical, critical. And I don't care if it's the Health Department does it, or the Police Department, or the Fire Department, but somebody needs to go in there and make sure that only the proper people that are allowed to be entering these facilities are entering and that they're properly credentialed and that reasonable amounts of product are being given to them. This shouldn't be Hong Kong wink-wink medical marijuana. This should be medical marijuana. You know, if this is recreational, even if it's recreational, we can't justify 14 locations. They are not economically viable. So the other thing I'd like to point out is, several people have brought the notion that the Health Department does not have the authority to do this. That's stunning to me because that's what we do, that's a big portion of what we do. We see public health issues regardless of where they are. We pass regulation and we enforce it. You all are familiar with, you know, we regularly change our restaurant regulations. But, you know, when public pools became a problem, we put in a regulation and we inspect and regulate public pools. Whenever we saw that tanning beds were a problem, a public health issue, we passed a regulation and we inspected them and we enforced them. You can't put in a sewer system here. You can't, you know, we dictate where the hot water's going to be, where the trash receptacles are going to be, you know, three-bowl sinks, hand sinks, you know. That's what we do. We pass regulations without political influence, and we enforce those regulations. And the concept that we can't, you know, regulate cannabis is just, you know, you could maybe take that away from us, but we have that authority now. And you can get a public, you can get a legal opinion to say anything. You know, every day, we watch on TV a horrific murder. Everything's captured on videotape. We've got DNA evidence. There's an eyewitness. And you can find one group of lawyers that will say, he should be given life in prison and first-degree murder. And you can find another group of lawyers who will say, he's an innocent man. He was in self-defense. You can get a legal opinion to say anything. So being that you have a legal opinion that says that we don't have this authority, I can tell you, we have a legal opinion that we do. So maybe take a challenge of a judge, but it would be counter to everything that we've done in our entire existence. We pass regulations and we regulate commerce. That's what we do. So I wasn't expecting to speak. Matter of fact, I was told not to speak. But you invited me up. I want to thank you so much. I truly, you know, I appreciate Mark Nestle Road's comments. I'm here, you know, despite what anybody thinks. I support commerce. I want this to be here. But I am not affected by leases or rent or tax revenues. I'm just here to do what's best for the Morgantown.
And Sam, I did want you to speak because there was an opinion that, you know, what you guys had put forth was something that you were solely pushing. So it's important we hear each of the-
He made me do it.
We hear each of the Board of Health, and again, you had kind of stated at the end, in all the meetings, I've never heard a Board of Health member saying they are against medical cannabis.
We are all-
You're all for it. They just want to be able to do it in a reasonable way.
Truly, if you don't take anything from my speech, I just say, you get what you inspect, not what you expect. Somebody has to look after this. There's one person employed in the Office of Medical Cannabis. There's no way he can look after our 14 and do much less the 100 in the state, but he can't look after 14. Do we really want to leave the inspection portion to a Charleston agency that doesn't answer to us? I think we want that locally.
Okay.
And if you don't want that at that department, put it to Police Department.
Well, thank you. So that was the reasoning aspect. The other aspect, and Dr. Smith, you can probably come back up, since you are a lawyer and a doctor. And you said a little bit in your opening, so you may not need to reiterate too much. But, you know, this is really the 800-pound gorilla in the room, is the statute that you passed and how it doesn't conflict with state statute. So could you explain that a little bit? Again, I'm not going, I don't need to go in. We've got opinions. We've been poring over that for now over a year. So it just, it's been 14, 15 months that we've been talking about this, just for the Jess refreshment and Tom's refreshment and my refreshment. Sometimes I can't remember what we talked about last week. Just kind of your overall thought process in regards to how this doesn't violate state statute.
Sure. Again, thanks. I would open by saying that if there's any remaining concern that boards of health do not have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations, I would ask why then did this year's legislature take that away with Senate Bill 12? So it seems to me that the Senate bill put another layer of inspection upon rules and regulations that come out of boards of health. And be that as it may, the arena of public health didn't particularly like that. The Association of County Commissioners didn't like it, but the legislative body pushed it through anyway. So be that as it may, those are the rules that we work under. The, I think, starting point has been that, and Sam alluded to it, that Jason Frame's previous job was in radiation. He was an inspector that would come around and, if you had an X-ray machine in a dental office and what have you, he was in charge of that bureaucratic section. And again, I'm not to take anything away from him. He may be the most brilliant mind on medical marijuana, but I'm not sure what background he comes to this job with. And as with many state jobs, there's limited funding. And he did start as a force of one person. I understand that there's been a couple of other hires that he may be up to four, six people now. But again, that is woefully small in numbers as to what is going to be, in my mind, required to do an effective job of monitoring growth and, you know, production and dispensing. And when we look at the rules, some of which have come from DHHR, some have come from legislature, there seems to be some deficits. And I think that you've heard from our board, some of the areas that we were most concerned with. And so we, too, put an attorney on retainer, and Mr. Kaputer had worked through a lot of these issues with us. And there's five strong-minded people on our board. And there are certainly areas where we have healthy discussions about what's the best plan to move forward. And so we understood upfront that if we put together a rule that would be viewed as particularly hard-lined and one that would have financial implications for people who are trying to develop property, or people who are leasing property, or people who are building out property, or the eventual owners of those properties who were then trying to sell medical marijuana, we're aware that that element, that friction point between where does public health end and where does commerce begin, is an area where this rule could be attacked. And- And we, on multiple occasions, over a long period of time, had people from the industry and other subject matter experts, healthcare, what have you, to try to develop what we thought was a reasonable ordinance. At the end of that, because of the then artificial date that was put forth by the legislature, that things need to be pushed out at a certain date, the board, seeing that this document, which we've always thought of as a living document and would be improved over time, that this rule got approved unanimously. And it was after much discussion and a lot of prayer and thought went into it. And so, we still knew that this is the best that we had on this date, and it went to the county for public comment as required. And we saw that there were some areas that would be more difficult to defend and others that would be easy to defend. And so, we then took it upon ourselves to have a quotation mark softened, or an amended version, that would change some of the language so that it would be viewed maybe less arduously. And so, that is currently before the county courthouse for public comment. And so, this is one of those areas where there's going to be strong opinion from multiple positions. We are obliged to take the position of what will protect the public and promote the public good. And we firmly believe that crime and other elements of substance abuse and such are part of the purview of public health. We don't have a good track record in Appalachia of substance abuse. We don't have a good track record of healthcare providers not diverting substances. For whatever reason, we have lots of substance use issues, whether it's alcohol, nicotine, vaping, you name it, there's a lot of dependency habits that we have. We're concerned because this may be added to that list. And so, therefore, we were trying to take a reasonable approach of what will be something that the Health Department can put their stamp on and say, these are our areas of concern, and these are the areas where we think that additional enforcement and oversight needs to be put forth. Now, that being said, it isn't, if Charleston were to amend, and maybe they will, maybe in this coming session, they may say recreational marijuana. There's certainly some whispers around the water cooler that that's coming. Our concerns are not going to change. It's going to be the same, and I think that it was Dr. Dick Yakiya who said that, or I'm maybe now confused as to who said it, but you can do this now, you can do this later, we're trying to be proactive in this and doing the due diligence and looking at this as an issue where we have national input and trying to come up with the most reasonable oversight that we have. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No.
Thank you.
Long way around answering, and I was-
I'm bad about that.
I'm sorry. Did you, did everybody that you had here on behalf of the Health Department, I know Dr. Husted came in, and he's been a consultant to the Health Department, did you want him to be able to speak, Dr.?
I'm going to say no, and I'm going to ask not to him. This is the reason why. If we allow him, then what's going to happen is, we're probably going to have to allow someone on the other side to speak. So, that's why I just want to keep it the board and us.
I would like to just count on that. I believe, I watched the video, I watched the YouTube, and I just felt like he was cut off yesterday. He brought a letter, and I don't even know if you all read it, but I think that at least people are going to be ready for the rest. And I think that that's critical.
Again, the one point, and I know that I'm not-
Listen.
He's the preeminent medical expert in this area, and I just think that you all coming to any kind of decision without fully exploring his thoughts is incorrect.
Okay, may I just, a point of order, you all can decide, but this has been my concern all along, that if we open it up for one, we open it up for everyone, and we'll be here all day. So, that's why I'm asking it just to keep with the board members and us. And that's my concern.
Again, I don't see any issue with having to open up to the other side, because the whole point of the discussion is to have the Board of Health's opinion, and he's a consultant to the Board of Health.
The only point that I would make is we, I don't feel he was cut off yesterday, and we did receive and read his letter, but, so I feel that we've gotten his take on it already and keeping in line with Tom's concern. I don't, I didn't review what we set forth as the guidelines in advance for, if we did for this hearing, but if it was just limited to Board of Health, or if we had the option of, I guess we always had the option of doing what we want, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a work session, and we can basically do whatever it wants, but again, it's, I don't want to-
No, I'm just bringing a point of order, and I would request that we keep the conversation between the Board of Health and us, because this is going to be continual on. And I think that would help us expedite things.
But being the person that attends all the Board of Health meetings, Dr. Vagliani?
As a-
But Sam, hold on.
As a citizen of Mon County, I just-
Sam, let me speak. I know when they were working on these ordinances, Dr., is it Vagli-
Vagliani.
Vagliani? And Dr. Husted was, were consulting the Health Department, and I just respectfully ask that, since he came here, he's got a family, this lets hear what he has to say. It's, unless you guys have, unless you two-
I don't have a strong objection to it, other than, you know, it is a work session, we don't have any formal rules, so I suppose it's okay.
Dr. Husted, we'll keep it brief.
Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate your time again. Thank you for letting me speak. The letter that we brought up yesterday, actually, we had had a large faculty meeting not long after, and we talked it over, and we had an additional, an additional 15 physicians sign on to it, so actually kind of have an amended letter with 22 signees. 21 of them are physicians, many are addiction experts, we also have child and adolescent psychiatrists, we have trainees, we have a pharmacist, so there's a lot more to it, including Dr. Vagliannetti. We had had some issues because of kind of the last-minute nature of it, getting everybody signed on, but everybody that wanted to sign on really has signed on at this point. I'll briefly go over it and then add some thoughts to. So, really, what our letter is, our concerns are, for one, again, if you want to medicalize marijuana, that's the purview of the legislature, but it's also the purview of the County Health Department to administrate that. So, if you open a pharmacy, you have to have a pharmacist there, otherwise it's illegal. You can't have a clinic without a doctor there, it's illegal. You, there's certain things that really need to occur, and as of right now, you, basically, they want their cake and to eat it too, that they can say it's medical marijuana, but not actually have any medical experts present ever. And from our take, that's certainly a concern, because what we see is that it's perceived that marijuana does not cause any harm, and in fact, that it helps people solely. If that were the case, then who would I be to object to any of this? I would be a fool. So, if it's all good and no bad, that would be insane for me to think otherwise, but the reality is, that's not the case. Does marijuana help with certain things? Absolutely. Pain for people that are dying, you know, in the US, we'll give people who are dying just about anything. If you're in England, they give you heroin if you're dying, if you're hospice. It's not illegal there. So, there's certainly some conditions that it can be helpful for. Other conditions, it's more question mark. There's not a lot of high-grade evidence for any of this stuff, including PTSD. I've treated thousands, thousands of patients with opioid use problems and cannabis problems. We just had somebody in our training today that has serious PTSD from years of abuse, and she's from Pennsylvania, and she's getting medical marijuana, but guess what? She was never offered effective treatment that we know helps, and that's the concern. All you have to do is Google West Virginia medical marijuana, and you can find somebody that'll give you a card if you give them enough money. That was not the nature of the law, that is not what they intended to do. Their intention was, if someone did not respond to normal treatment, that their doctor that they had a relationship with, that they're the ones that certified. What we're seeing is, just like the dispensaries that are trying to open in multitude, you're having providers coming in, get a medical license, and try to get as many people for as much cash to have a medical marijuana card. That's our concerns, among other. It's perceived to not cause harm, it's perceived to be only helpful. The more it's done so, the more people use it, the more exposures the youth have, the more hospitalizations we have, the more people that I end up treating in the hospital because they're psychotic. For those who aren't aware, so Amsterdam, so the Netherlands, they have, they know a little bit more about marijuana than we do. They actually put a ban on THC above 15%. They consider it to be the same level as methamphetamines, as heroin, as cocaine. But what do we do in America? Everything's above 15%, okay? So, I think we should learn from people who have more experience with us. So, simple initiatives like having a provider to explain some of these things to people that are making serious health decisions, people that are deciding to choose to take their chemo drug versus smoking marijuana, or using an edible form for now until smoking gets passed eventually, I think we should require somebody with some knowledge in medicine to maybe be there. And certainly, you know, I've spent my fair share of time in the ED, I'm not looking forward to people coming in after robberies and gunshot wounds and things. So, these are things we need to think about as we go through with the legislation, as we go through with whether we decide to cut off the legs of the Health Department with this or not. So, I just ask that, again, from our side, we worry about this stuff, we certainly see effect on people, including pregnant women and children. There was actually just a huge study released yesterday, right after we spoke, about the effects on the brain and how it makes the brain of the youth smaller, so literally your head shrinks with chronic cannabis exposure. So, it's tough. I just appreciate you guys listening to the County Health Department, supporting them in their efforts to really take care of our community, as we care. I do not have any financial stake in this game either. If truly, if I knew what was good for me, I probably would buy stock in cannabis industry and I'd step aside, and I'd say, it's fine, it's not going to cause any problems, but ethically, morally, as a physician, I couldn't do that. Morally, ethically, I could never recommend somebody do it when they forego effective treatment that's out there already. And that's the concern, is that you're going to have people that are poorly trained, that are telling people to forego their treatment and to instead use cannabis, because yes, we make money with cannabis, we do not make medicine, or money pushing effective treatments. So, again, I just appreciate the board listening to us and letting us kind of help them along a little bit, and appreciate you all letting me speak for a moment, and I'll submit the extra letter with all the other signatures, including Vagliannetti.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, Dr. Smith, is there anything else you'd like to add? I'm glad that two members of the legislature are here, because I know that when we talked last fall, we had talked about, you know, in regards to these statutes, whether you can go forward with these rules or not, how, what other ways can we, again, this opportunity is to make people aware of what your thoughts are and what your considerations are, but are there other things that it could be done to raise awareness and to arrive at the same public awareness so that something could be done about this, about your concerns?
Given the late hour, none of that comes to mind, and not to say that it doesn't exist, I'm just not smart enough to come up with it on the spur of the moment. I would just conclude by saying that I think it is abundantly clear that the Board of Health and the Health Department did not take this chore lightly, that we have attempted to do our due diligence, that we are not power-grabbing. If I was a power-grabber, I'd be in charge of the banking industry. I think that the volunteers that serve on our board have done an exceptional job. I know that people give kudos to the Health Department from Monague County, but I stand in all of our board. I would suggest that the Board of Health from Monague County ranks head and shoulders above every other county Board of Health in the state, barring none. And they take their job seriously, and if we need additional information, we get it. I think that this is a work in progress, that it certainly would not have been my choice to do this in the midst of COVID. It would not have been my choice to try to do it to meet artificial deadlines that came up from the state, and as soon as that we met our obligation, they took months then to make their second move. I think that you would find that the Board is willing to work, to find common ground. I think that there is a lot of common ground. And I think that we all agree that we're going to try to do our best to protect the community and the public health. And regardless of how you all vote on this, I don't think that, you know, it's going to be completely done deal. This isn't going to be carved in stone, and that, you know, we would look to try to continue to work to find solutions to what we think are some serious issues that this brings to the table. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, and any of the board, if I missed anything? They fell asleep a while back, so.
Well, I want to say, I mean-
Do you have questions, or is Mr. Ellis perhaps have something?
Not questions, we're comments, but go ahead.
I do have one. Have any other county boards of health passed similar ordinances that you're aware of?
No. I can tell you this, that the only other holdout, so to speak, is the Cabo County Board of Health. And we had several discussions with them. The issue seems to be, you know, what is the easiest path here? And you can see the controversy that this has caused. And, you know, it's not been an easy path for us to, you know, have our ethics and values, you know, sort of publicize that, you know, we're this or we're that. I think that that's clear, that we're trying to do the best job that we can. I can tell you that now that this has come up, there are a lot of Boards of Health looking again at this issue to see what is Mon County, because we're a leader in this state, and what we come up with will impact others, there will be a ripple effect.
And one other question, I know that in order to prescribe, will DEA-approved prescriptions, you have to have a special DEA prescription license, a physician does. I forget what that's called, there's some kind of, to prescribe opioids or things like that, you have to have a schedule something DEA license. For prescribing medical cannabis in West Virginia, you have to have a separate license as well, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And it's only physicians at this point that are able to apply, not-
That is my understanding as well.
Not nurse practitioners or PAs?
Yeah, I can clarify.
Sure. If you can come up-
Come up so the speaker, so they can, the people can hear.
So, it's, to do it, you simply take a four-hour course online. It's not nearly as strenuous as a DEA waiver. So, the DEA, to prescribe any controlled substance, you have to go through a lot of hoops, you have to work with the DEA. If I were to violate, say if I were to start over-prescribing like we've dealt with before, I would have some DEA agents coming and knocking on my door. There really isn't anything like that with the medical cannabis laws. It's basically, you take a four-hour waiver course and then you're certified. The other thing to keep in mind is, you're not truly prescribing cannabis, so what they do is they certify. So, you don't write a prescription for how much people are supposed to use, because there's no consistency. That's one thing that we want to make abundantly clear, is that, and that's part of the letter, is that the different formulations, the different strengths, a doctor doesn't write, like, use this much or that much. Basically, it's just a card that says you can get as much as you want now. That's the scary thing about it. And again, it's very dependent on the dispensary, so they may go and get a little bit, or if the dispensary is very generous, I guess, they could give them a whole lot. And it's the, kind of the indications are ever-changing. One thing also, just briefly in the letter, is that overdose deaths, so one of the big draws of permitting medical cannabis was the idea that it would lower overdose deaths. That has not been seen in practice or literature, the research, that's one of our, certainly our concerns, is we worry it might do the exact opposite, is where these overdoses is not decreased now, so the promise-
You're required to be a West Virginia licensed physician to prescribe, correct? We can't have like an Ohio physician-
Certified, yeah, so.
To certify, so out-of-state, like, online out-of-state doctors couldn't get licensed here to certify and authorize a card, it has to be a West Virginian.
But I can tell you that a lot of them that have been doing it in other states are getting medical licenses in West Virginia.
medical licenses in West Virginia explicitly just to certify, and it's very easy to, again, obtain it, so that's what we're seeing more and more, so that's kind of where we are. I believe out of everyone in all of WVU Medicine, there's only one physician so far that, who's a palliative care, kind of cancer, cancer person that's decided to get certified. Everybody else has declined it, for what it's worth, hundreds of doctors.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yeah, first, I want to clear, I'm going to bring this down, if you don't mind. I'm glad of your passion, okay? I'm very appreciative of your passion, because I'm passionate too, and I think when you say that there are several delegates here, this is what they've been discussing, and where my concern questions are is, I had difficulty separating, when you talked about marijuana, medical marijuana we're dealing with, but most of your conversation was recreational marijuana, and that bothers me. So, that's where the question was. The second concern I have is that, I wonder if 75 years ago, this is the same conversation they had with prohibition, because, and again, please don't take this the wrong way, but you were very passionate, how you felt. I never heard the Board of Health come out at any time with the 43 bars that are downtown, and the problems that are locally there, and when you talk about supply and demand, I can tell you, it's always 43 bars, because I was in city council, and when there was 45 bars, two never made it. So, there's only that limited amount of bars, and the problems that you say could happen, I don't see you saying public safety for there. So, those are concerns that I have, but I guess the biggest concern is that I don't see it as an economic issue. You keep throwing it out as economic. I see it as my friend who has stage IV cancer, who doesn't have the ability to get that, which I believe it's an option that the state legislature has just offered to allow that person to have. And as you say, you represent, you know, the health, and you're right, and let me tell you, I can't say how exceptional you are, and I don't mind that you come out this way, but I also am elected by the people, and I'm the arm of the state legislature and the state government, and when you, several of you did admit that it was above and beyond the state rule, and unfortunately, you may all be right, but by law, I have to abide by what the state law says and represent them, and that's where my questions and concerns are, and that's where I'll be coming from. Now, once we had this ruling, I think, I forget who it was, it may, you may have said it, we need to sit down to figure out then what we can do to try and get some of these issues that you're very concerned about, Dr., that you're very concerned about, but I will also disagree with you. I spent 34 years as a guidance counselor. My friend died in high school overdose in the bathroom. I have a family member who overdosed, but the studies also show that if you go in the areas of marijuana, the reduction has gone down in fentanyl, drug abuse, and overdose. So, you know what the problem is? It's both sides. You know, each side can decide it. I think we all in this room want to do the best that we can do for our community, and I'm more than willing, after my vote, whatever it will be, is to sit down to say, "What can we do to be prepared?" But I can't already punish 14 businesses that had been approved, and I believe, whether it's right or wrong, supply and demand, that isn't what I, I haven't, we don't, we're discussing what should have been discussed, and probably was, at the legislature, and that's where they made those rules. So, again, I'm not, I'm just very, very concerned, you know, that we're setting a precedent, and if I allow this to happen, then what other areas am I saying, "Well, let's not look at the state law and allow this to happen?" And that's a big concern I have, so I'll end with that.
So, we're not in our public meeting where we're deliberating our vote, but you're...
No, I'm just giving, no, well, I wanted to give generally my concern, so you know ahead of time where my concern is.
But I do, I give...
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to be honest.
I always completely appreciate Tom's passion. Again, this is, just one second, let me finish. This is meant to be an information gathering effort, we're taking it in, thank you, and then we'll make our decision. So, one, just quickly...
Yeah, no, Tom, you had mentioned that you're, are you equating bar and liquor to medical marijuana?
What I'm equating is, you said that you had a public safety hat. You create, "Public safety" is what you use in public health problems.
Are you reading?
There is a problem downtown, yes, and nowhere in the Health Department have they said any concern about that. You're talking about location of 43 bars. You're concerned about, your argument was too close to each other, or we have 14. My question is, you talk about a million dollars, but if there's not enough, if there's not going to be enough people to get it, you won't have a million dollars, that's, you're now getting into recreational marijuana.
If it's 100,000, if it's 100,000, Tom, it's...
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, Sam, we're, please, Sam, your friend...
Anybody can go into a bar at 18 years old, anybody. You don't need a medical certificate, and bars sell food, they sell entertainment, they do many things. Medical cannabis stores sell one item to a very minute portion of the population.
Thank you, Sam. Again, I appreciate everybody being here, and from the beginning, I, and we went almost 90 minutes without being adversarial, and again...
Well, I don't think it's adversarial.
No, we're all on the same team, we all want the same thing. We have a couple visitors here from Charleston that may not, you know, they've been to Mon County, they probably want the same thing for us too, is, you know, for, I haven't heard anybody's, Dr. Husted, I didn't ask you whether you are for medical cannabis, I think that what you were saying was, you know, after everything else has gone through, and that's the next step, you wouldn't be objected to it. So, I haven't heard anybody in the room saying, "I'm against medical cannabis." So, we all want that option to be available, we just want to make sure that we do it, and we have different opinions as far as how we should do that, and that's fine, but I love to hear the expertise of the Board of Health, the passion. I've heard all sides of it in the passion, and no one's wrong, they all have legitimate arguments, so I appreciate everybody, you know, coming in, and we can make this available to the public, so that, I'm sure there's people in Charleston, you could save a drive, there's people down there that are listening to us right now, and that's good, you know, because I think people should hear, you know, the concerns...
Could I ask one favor?
Sure.
I was going to ask Evan Hansen, as a delegate, to try and clarify since...
Ask Evan, ask Evan to come to the meeting on Wednesday.
Yes, oh, on Wednesday, okay, that's fine.
So, as a point of housekeeping, Mr. Ellis, multiple sources, because of the stat, we are required to make a ruling on this by June 26th, 27th, I'm not sure the exact date, I think the 26th. Our next public meeting is the 23rd, so this will be on our agenda next Wednesday, so you can, we'll have a discussion, we'll have our reasoning, and we will take a stance on this, and then, like everything else, we'll move forward. So, thanks, everybody, this meeting's adjourned.